Good evening. I'd like to call the order. The City Council Workshop of the City of Satellite Beach, January 16, 2013, approximately 6:30. And this time, a presentation by Bubard County on the mid-reach nourishment. Virginia Baker. Barker, sorry.
Thank you very much for having me this evening. Satellite Beach, you all know is such a special place, but it's special to me, it's special to me because you all have been such great partners in everything that you've done there. And there's been a lot of that, of course, we'll talk about two big ones tonight, each of them somewhere. But that solidarity of our community, I think, gives us tremendous voice as a block of all the communities together that individually we just would not have. So with that said, I have a list of bullets. We've got the beach grid here on beaches now. Mike McGarry's been doing this for so long that I struggle to keep up with all that he is doing. He apologizes for not being with you tonight. I have his business cards for more information if I can answer everyone's questions. He wanted me to cover both the short-term plan for our beaches and the long-term plan. As you well know, Hurricane Sandy did a doozy on us out there. And so we have some short-term things that we're working very hard on to restore the losses that are specifically attributable to Sandy. These would not advance the mid-high waterline, they would only restore what was lost during that storm. The funding application was submitted some weeks ago and that's in the process. The bid went out for advertisement and we've been waiting for the bid opening that should be next week. Funding is the big, big, big question because we went through the assessment process with FEMA and they submitted their project worksheets. And then at first we got a no, there hasn't been enough damage in Florida for FEMA to participate at all. So we got together with all the other beach communities that had damage from Sandy and we provided a packet to the governor's office as to why that determination was, in our opinion, not appropriate. FEMA has a threshold system where typically, based on population, if your damages cross a certain threshold level, you're eligible. And that has always been the case in our experience, but always before impacts, there has been a big storm coming, everybody moved to anticipate damages and there was an emergency declaration before the storm actually got here. At this time with Sandy, it sort of caught us off guard, we didn't anticipate the level of damages that we experienced statewide, it was not anticipated. And so that emergency declaration also didn't happen until after that. So it had quite a bit of emergency declaration and then when FEMA came to do those initial preliminary assessments, as soon as they hit the threshold, they said, yeah, okay, you know, you've met the threshold, we're going to move on to the next county. They were doing just sort of quick and dirty assessments. And so those damages were what was turned into FEMA. And based on that, FEMA said, you know, these damages really aren't so severe that Florida can't handle the building itself. So we worked with the other counties to put together a more thorough assessment of what the total damages were, although it's that FEMA just didn't spend time here giving the first go-round and submitted that to the governor's office. And so now we, in theory, are eligible for FEMA assistance, but they have made a new determination that because of the placement of our protection, the dune location, straddling public and private property, the FEMA fund is supposed to be used, the category of FEMA funds that have always been used for restoring dunes, is supposed to be, they've made a new determination that it should be on public property. So we are struggling with that issue. And one of the, what appears to be the easiest way to deal with that is through demonstrating that we have easements from the private properties for this public protection benefit. And we've always gotten easements for the dune projects in the past, but we are, you know, pursuing that again so that we can provide this packet to FEMA and we hope that that will address the FEMA funding for the public. The state is, of course, facing, you know, very difficult financial times and so they are in the midst of trying to figure out whether they can come up with emergency supplement funds for beaches, for Debbie, Isaac, and Sandy, damages around the state. And so we still don't know whether we would have any state funding assistance. Locally, we are planning to go to the commission on February 5th and explore down here the bids, here the prices for different volumes of sand, here's what we know about federal budget and physical cliff and FEMA's determination on cost share, and here's what we don't know about state cost sharing, what we want to do. So funding will be probably a very large determinant of how much we can do in the short run. For Sandy, but staff, we're doing everything we can, have everything in place, go get those easements, go get the permits, hit the bids so that we're ready to jump when whatever funds become available. So ideally, this project, assuming funds are available, it would be identical to projects successfully built here before, to which we've had very few complaints. We built this dune project in 2005 and rebuilt it in 2006, 2008, and 2009. So folks should be very familiar with what this would look like if we find the funds to go and do it. We would always stay at least 20 feet back from the mid-high waterline to avoid any The easements, we've sent out letters of correspondence from all the handful of people where the ownership is unclear and we're doing more property research to find out who the proper owner is, but we've sent out about 600 easements, write a request, and we held a couple workshops in the community. And we know y'all are accepting people dropping off their easements here, thank you for that. We have another opportunity for people to come, try and bring notaries out to the community so that folks go practice farming notaries. So we have another opportunity for that tomorrow night at Pelican Park Clubhouse, so thank you for that facility, 4 to 7 p.m. We will have that staff with two notaries to provide the field re- and the witness on the table. We have cards here that have our beach hotline information, so people, you know, right now it says, you know, we're moving forward to be ready to go pending the mail of funds. We won't know anything else probably until February 5th, but if people want to check that hotline for updates, the number is, the same number, it's been, let's set this thing up in 2009 or 2006, 375374. And is the best way, should I just pass these around? That line on the way to the... So the hotline card is on one side and Mike McGarry's card is on the other. So the long-range project, our Army Corps of Engineers mid-reach project, also requires easements. So since we needed easements, we needed to get easements started on our long-range project and we needed easements for the FEMA project, we worked with the Corps to develop language that would satisfy both needs so that regardless of the timing of the long-term project, we will have ongoing authority to do the short-term repair. So one easement to cover either type of project. And because we're looking for a long-term easement, those are, easements for the long-term project, those are potential easements for the ones that help define the core for the dunes have been short-term, one or two year, just long enough to get the dune rebuilt. So that's the difference. So for the core project, they have just started the PEG process, Engineering and Design, Project Engineering and Design. The general reevaluation report, which we've been working on since April 4th, about 2014, has been signed by Jacksonville District and Land Division and Headquarters, and it's sitting in the Assistant Secretary of the Army's office, moving from desk to desk. And it's got one signature to go. And the last one, you know, Congressman Posey and Senator Nelson, they have helped us so many times moving this thing from, after it gets hung up on our person's desk for several months, we call them and they make calls and make those letters and we get that signature and moves to the next desk. So we're still one signature away from having a signed general reevaluation report. That project will advance the mid-high waterline, widen the beach into the ocean by 10 to 20 feet, depending on exactly where in the Satellite Beach, Indian Harbor beach shoreline, we're standing at the moment. And that 10 to 20 foot, whether the reason it's not wider is obviously to protect those rock resources in the nearshore environment. The project does plan to bury 10% of the rock reef resources, which amounts to three acres. We would mitigate with that, mitigate for the three acres that's buried by constructing 4.8 acres offshore, offshore location. You know, there's the biological argument of, do you want many small patches or do you want one big one to maximize diversity and whatever. So we've tried to balance the distribution of some large and a few small along the shoreline. And we are hopeful that, because the three acres that we're burying is right there in the surface, where the sandbars move on and off and on and off, those are ephemeral resources. Whereas where we're going to build mitigation reefs in 14, 15-foot water depths, those should not be buried, they should be exposed all the time. So we really think that the environmental lift that we're going to have by constructing that 4.8 acres is going to be quite good. So we're excited to build that mitigation and see how it pans. Of course, there's extensive monitoring, biological monitoring required to demonstrate success and if we have to go out and do some modifications, we will do that. The best case for construction now is November 2014 to May 2015. Of course, that's wide depending on when the Assistant Secretary of the Army acts in line for GRR and when funding becomes available. Back in the day, we talked to our legislative delegation and we had a good feel for where we were in the priority of our delegation's request. Without earmarks, there is a core work plan and, to some sense, it makes a lot of sense to have a prioritization scheme nationwide. We're now going to be competing with Northeast and them wanting to repair their beaches with Sandy. And so we really don't know how we're going to fare in this particular environment with this little cliff issues and the Northeast damage. So we're working with our delegation, we're working with the Corps. Our, part of that ranking process, in theory, is based on benefit-to-cost ratio. Our benefit-to-cost ratio is greater than 3 to 1, which is quite competitive nationwide, or at least it was so for the Hurricane Sandy damages. So we really just have to see how we do, but hopefully, what's the nation that covers from that, we should certainly be competitive. The county has gone ahead and acquired state permits for the federal mid-reach project so that if money fell out of the sky, we could build it without the Corps. And so that once the ANA signs the GRR, we don't have to wait for the Corps to then start the permitting process. It took us four years to get that permit. So we're very glad that we have it ready to go and we can sign it to the Corps to use to construct their project if they get funds before we do. So the last bullet is, just repeating that the easements that we're requesting now for the Hurricane Sandy repairs would also be good for the core projects that we want to come, folks, with the central class. Last my bullets from Mike, and I'm happy to answer any questions or try to answer any questions tomorrow.
Virginia, this has nothing to do with Satellite Beach, but it has everything to do with Melbourne Beach. I was down where the flashing light is down there with, where the Vice President is, Honest Johns, and all that sort of thing. And just happened to be along that beach. And with some of those houses, you open the sliding door, you take one step and you're on the beach. I mean, there's, the sliding door's that far. Yeah, exactly. And I have gotten asked a lot of questions about who do they call to check the status on that. So I'm guessing that the number that you gave is 637-5374. That's the number you want people to call to get information? Because I've heard that a couple times, they just didn't, they know what's going on, but they just didn't know how to get ahold of somebody.
You know, everyone who's asked, we've had an emergency, unincorporated one. We've had an emergency permitting project in place where we have very quickly turned around authorization for them to place their dunes as an emergency measure, knowing that it would take...
And some of that's going on down there. I saw trucks going out there today, so, okay. Okay. So, all right, direct them to this number, thank you.
Virginia, what's this one question? What happens if you don't obtain the easements? The 600 easement?
Right now, the plan is no easement, no sand, for the particular property that does not fund the easement. That's what has happened on many other projects in the past, and that's what we've done on our dune projects in the past. We have not had that problem in the federal project areas and in some other projects outside of Florida counties where there have been people who were hesitant, once they saw the project happening, you know, off the beach, they then thought, oh, gosh, yes, I think about that, I think see how that's going to be good. That's going to provide protection. And they hurried to sign it off. So we're hopeful that we won't have any of those.
Okay.
Virginia, the article that was in the paper today, I mean, I guess it alluded to the fact that you're getting all these permits in place, we're getting everything ready, it has to be done before May 1st. What happens if no money comes? I mean, the county doesn't have the resources to do the whole project.
Right.
I mean, are there going to be priority areas that get done or is it just going to drop by the wayside?
I think, yeah, that's going to be a very difficult discussion and that will probably start on February 5th depending on, you know, whether we think there are impending answers coming from federal government or state government. We just, Commissioner Mike decided to delay two weeks and take it up at their next meeting. But, yeah, we're going to have to look really hard at what is best for our community. Do we take the dollars that we do have available and sprinkle them very lightly across everyone or do we do something more significant in front of those properties that are most at risk? How do we balance that? But that's not a sound kind of that of our paper.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
We'll let you political people...
I know, I know the process that this has gone through because John Ferguson and I were at that meeting in Jacksonville in 2003. So I know how long it has taken to get here with the core project. You know, maybe at some point in time it'll come to fruition. I mean, I'm hoping that these dates are...
Yeah, of course, we had a plan back in the early 90s.
I know, I know.
And that's when the rock reef resources became an issue. And so we removed the mid-reach from the project back then in order to allow the north reaches, south reaches to move forward. And then as soon as we got those initial construction projects done, we went back to this shoreline and then figuring out how to tackle the environment.
It was, it was amazing to me, the number of agencies that were at that meeting that each had a stake in what was being presented and what was being planned. And the differences of opinion from agency to agency was amazing because the ultimate goal was to, you know, protect the beach and properties. They all had different scenarios going on.
Quite balancing it.
Yeah, it was. It still is. Long-term, did you say they dump or put sand 2005, 2006, 2008, 2009? I'm skeptical, just because it doesn't work. You have a big hole at the port. Have you been on the beach on the north side of the port, the north side of the tip of the cape? Sure not like the beach here. Why don't they put a transfer station in at Port Canaveral like they have done in Jupiter and some of those places there so you don't have to keep spending this money because all that sand, you said you didn't hurt the reefs and that stuff, well, all that sand's gone. Go down Sebastian Inlet and see, in a two-day storm, it changed it. We're not, you know, sand goes where it wants, Mother Nature takes it. So how is this going to be any different than all these other times for the dollar and for the environment? I mean, I...
What's the question?
What's it cost to do that? I don't know, it's just, there's a hole there that obviously the beach was much, much wider before.
The channel at Port Canaveral was started in 1949 and then that wasn't working and they finally got through in 1951. By 1953, they could see that erosion signature migrating down the beach that was not anticipated. And so at that point, there was direction to Army Corps of Engineers staff, we need a bypass plan, start figuring out a bypass plan. And in 1963, it was actually authorized by Congress in the Border Resources Act. And at the same time, a few other bypass plans had been constructed around the country and with mixed performance. And so the laboratory, the Army Corps laboratory in Pittsburgh was directed to look at sand transfer plants and, you know, how do you act line their efficiency? How do we figure out where they're going to work well and where they're not going to work well? And so that study drug on for the West Coast a very long time and communities here were, of course, extremely frustrated. By '78, when we still didn't have a transfer plant, the solution at that time was to take over, it was close to 3 million cubic yards, it was 2.8 million cubic yards that was dredged out of the Trident Basin, create Trident Basin and place that on the downriver beaches. And that very large, well, the sand stabilized the beaches for quite some time. So that bought everybody some time to try to figure out what to do. And by then, the study had demonstrated that the way that the sand piles up north of Canaveral Inlet, right, we have that enormous fillet that extends all the way out to Point of Paine, to maybe around... And so a fixed plant, it has, you know, a nozzle that is maybe rotating back and forth, but it's really only able to remove sand from a very small area. And the way that sand is deposited on our beaches along, you know, several miles of shoreline. And so a fixed bypass plant, they looked at rail systems, they looked at trussless systems, they looked at multiple designs and concluded that fixed bypass plant was really not our answer. But what we needed was to bring in a dredge every few years and, better than, and work the shoreline to take that material that shouldn't have bypassed naturally and suck it up and pump it through a pipe down to the, down to the beaches. And so those bypass operations started in 1955. So while we don't have a fixed plant that we can go take pictures of and feel comfortable with, we do have, Canaveral has a, an adopted in management plan that calls for the entire volume of sand that should be transported naturally by, to be collected and dredged and transported to the downriver beaches. So in the absence of major storms, major storm damage, that bypassing should stop the historical erosion patterns. The problem is that it takes, you know, just like it took a few decades for that erosion signal to get from Port Canaveral in 1951 down to Satellite Beach. It's going to take a long time for the bypass, sand that started in 1955 to stabilize our beaches all the way down to Satellite Beach. That's a very long, long answer to your question, but the, I think, part of what we were asking too is, you know, 2005, 2006, 2008, that's a lot of sand, that's a lot of work. And of course, you know, we had, we had hurricanes in 2005, we had, or in 2004, we had Wilma, we had Noelle. So, you know, this has been an extremely busy hurricane season. Now, is that what we should expect going forward? Maybe, but that is not typical of what we've experienced, you know, in the last hundred years. Or is now looking at climate change in their planning documents and in the long-term plan for the mid-reach that was considered, it's certainly not considered in tiny little bandage general projects.
Any other council comments? This time I'll open it up for citizens' comments. Any citizens' comments on this particular issue?
Roger Gudis, resident Satellite Beach. Good evening, council. Thank you for the presentation. It's no secret Dale and I live on a beach. We've gone through several re-nourishment projects. One question I have is in regards to the easement. If I've tried to follow the trail all the way up from the county to the Corps of Engineers, I'm still waiting for an answer. Prior, prior letters of permission and prior letters of easements, why in this easement are we exchanging monies to make the easement work? Specifically, there's a dollar on the easement requesting an easement. That's a concern of mine. And I know this is two projects that are being combined into one. And I asked the Corps of Engineers, Corps of Engineers about this. The office is in Jacksonville and they are prepared to send me copies of easements that they formulated in other areas and they didn't seem to recall any draft transfer of monies, grantor and grantee. And then I fall in the trap of some court hearings, actually one that's run all the way to the street before. I don't know if this thing's resolved, 161, was 141 versus 161.191. And I talked to Mr. Geary about this, the line, the imaginary line of the dune he built up. He sent me a slide on that. But the concern is related to the mid-high waterline. Are residents on the beach giving up their property rights into the future for the sand? We are taxpayers and we have, as I said, between 161, 141 and 161.191, we have a thing called vicarious rights. And I don't know if the city signed easements with the parks out there. This is a concern of mine. And one, several property owners on Ocean Street... And one in several property owners on Ocean Street and further south. And we are looking for clarification on the, on these, these items to ensure that we maintain our property rights and are not giving them up for whatever reason. We do under, we all understand on the beach that there is public access. We all understand that people should use the beach. We accept that. In fact, we welcome residents to come by and play the beach. But to grant over rights temporarily is one thing versus granting rights infinitum for the rest of life of the property is another issue.
Ron, I don't mean to interrupt your conclusion. The buzzer just went off, so I apologize.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can, can we determine why there is a transfer of, of a dollar from the grantee to the grantor? And does that give up a property?
Look at the document that you're signing, like a contract, an agreement. Okay, every, a contract is not legal unless there is what they call consideration. And so in something like this, you'll have a nominal consideration. In this case, apparently, it's $1.
Our, our prior, our prior signed consent orders or consents for easements do not have that.
Does the thing say in consideration of $1?
Yes, it does.
Then that's what it is.
There were a couple of prime ones, but the prior ones do not.
Okay, I can't speak to that, but just from, from contract law, for a contract to be valid, there must be considerations. One party must give something and the other party must give something. And so when it's, um, it, it basically doesn't do anything except satisfy the consideration requirement in a contract. That's why it's there.
I also know my time ran out. And what, how does this affect property owners as far as rebuilding rights or expansion on their properties? Does this easement affect our own here in the city? For instance, do we have, because of the setbacks, we have to meet cer- certain requirements? Will this easement affect our capability to do what we want on the property?
These are actually very good questions.
And I do not have, again, I understand contracts with the dollar. I get that. But I'm trying to also find out why in the past we couldn't do that. We've got like a case of damnation. I don't know why, but I'm trying to drill down some more.
I think, I think, and maybe John can clarify this. There is a coastal construction line. And that coastal construction line, I believe, is the line that deems where you're able to build back from. Is that not correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, I mean, if, if the easement is, that you're talking about is in front of the coastal construction line, it shouldn't affect your ability to do anything on the property. Now, if it's on the other, on the other side of it, it's a different story, but it all, it all, building rights all are determined from the coastal construction line.
There is one of my points there. There is, that is one of my issues.
I would, I would think that, you know, looking over your particular property line, John should be able to determine where that line is and, and answer that question for you. The same way that, the same way that any other property owner should be able to come in and get that same answer.
A little bit of a point is, uh, there are some developments, improvements that would not be allowed any recorded easements. And so if there is any record of easement there, we would not admit improvements in that. Now, I will say that a lot of easements such as the one in the contract may be a limited purpose easement. So it's not like I'm giving up on the rights.
This is just for the, for the project.
Yes, you can go through there and look for sand or where that purpose is. Because also the reason why that we do not allow improvements in that easement is to make sure that there is an access to that. You know, pass their easements in back deep of jars. You can't have improvements there because, you know, pass the, have to go and get back there to do the easement deal. There is a statute of change. And I understand this for the protection of the properties. Aerialize starts the issue. And it specifically states in the contract agreement, the easement agreement, that you will only, and you will have to make your approval for a walkover. And I'm sure that's stat standard every time we do a walkover. Not the only since the last time it's been done. But again, we're getting into property rights here.
Does the city have to sign one of these agreements to have this sand for the ton of city property?
According to Alan Potter, he's shaking his head, yes.
Okay, so what Ron was just talking about, what would happen, for instance, if we had a nor'easter and we had issues with our walkovers, which we have had not too long ago, and we would need repair done to that? Would there be issues with that regarding this easement?
You know, we're really not qualified to answer. These are legal questions. Our city attorney's not here. And now you're into an area of speculation. We're, we're just not equipped to answer these.
Does it know? And answer it? And parceling?
Please.
You have to prepare a simple check sheet that if you have met your state permitting requirements and your city permitting requirements, you know, just sign this paper that you can check boxes we have done, this we've done now, and that will meet the requirements of this easement for things like pocket repair and places.
Thank you. Any other further public comment? Here and then I'll close that portion. I'll close this first workshop. And I will reopen the workshop for City Council Satellite Beach, January 16th, 2013, approximately 7:07, on Storm Order 101, presentation by Public Works Director Alan Potter.
Good evening, everybody. This is, uh, you know, my, your staff, the power pole, so bear with you. Tonight, um, we've been trying to get this together quite a while, the Storm Order Workshop. Um, you know, just trying to get everybody up to speed where we're at as far as our, our Storm Order program. And hopefully this will enlighten everybody where we're at, where we're going, and some of the challenges that, you know, we're going to face moving forward. Okay, how did we get here? Well, this is a little bit of a history lesson here. In the beginning, there was the Water Quality, the Water Quality Act basically was enacted to, um, put regulations on, um, the, the water, water quality and, um, I haven't solved it yet. Just any, any water body that came in the United States, they, there were standards that the water had to meet as far as quality. And that was basically the Water Quality Act of 1960. Well, I don't think that worked so well. In 1969, the Puyallup River in Ohio caught on fire because of pollution in the river. And so Water Quality Act wasn't stringent enough. So in 1972, the Clean Water Act was enacted, which began the NPDES. We'll get into the NPDES in a little while, but that's the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. And that initially dealt with point source pollution from, uh, you know, industry. And as I said, we'll, we'll get into that just in a little, a little bit more depth just said. From the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, or NPDES, came the municipal separate or Storm Order System, MS4, which we are, uh, we have a permit. And that's where our permit is. Uh, we are MS4 Phase 2. I'll get into that in a second, but basically it's a city-owned system that is, is not, does not have sewage going through it. And, um, it's just our Storm Order System. And out of the, in the permit process, in through litigation and EDA and the NPDES, Clean Water Act, they were, the states were mandated to come up with some kind of regulation to mon, to, to regulate what was impairing waters and try to limit the, the impairments. And that's what, uh, the total, uh, total maximum load loads are for the TMVLS. And out of the TMVLS, we, we get basically an action plan is how we're going to go about dealing with the TMVLS. Okay, to start with the NPDES, first they dealt with point source, points where they knew where the pollution was being generated. First was industrial waste. And the second being wastewater treatment plants. I'm sure there's other, other place that have it, but those are the two biggest, industrial waste and wastewater treatment plants. You know what comes out of wastewater treatment plants and industrial waste could, could be in. Sorry. But then there were non-point source contributors. And mainly that was the Storm Order Runoff. Every city has rain and, and every city contributes to, um, non-point source pollution. So aerialize, the permit requirement. Our permit is a, an MS4 municipal Phase 2 permit. And it's predicated on the city size and the type of beef. It's city-owned, you have no, no, uh, sewage going through it, and it is not tied to any, any Storm Order Treatment Plants. So it's basically just rainwater going through the system. In that permit, we are required to have a Storm Order Management Program. Because we have six outfalls that head into the Indian River Lagoon. Now, TMVLS were generated by, it was a mandate from the Clean Water Act, thanks to the NPDES. But I, apparently Florida and some other states were moving fast enough, so there was lawsuits that were brought upon the state. And a consent decree forced FDP's hand to come up with some numbers for the total maximum load loads. In, in our area, the impairments have been identified as nutrients, mainly nitrogen and phosphorus. So that's what we're dealing with. And, um, the load allocations that FDP came up with, we'll get into a little later, but that's what we're dealing with in TMVLS. And thus, now we're into the BMAP, which is how, how we manage those load allocations. In the BMAP, the base manager and action plan deals with basins. Every, every, uh, area in the state, the state is split into multiple basins. The Indian River Lagoon, where everybody has been assigned a basin. Indian River Lagoon, uh, has been split into sub-basins. We are in the Banana River Basin. Now, the management portion of it is everybody gets together and discusses or FDP decides what the methodology is to meet these load allocations. They would like to have this BMAP adopted, uh, next month, February 2, 2013. And in 15 years from the, the adoption, they would like, make, we, the goal is that we meet our load allocations. And our load allocations are, I think, 79% nitrogen and 75% phosphorus or, I have those proportions.
Yeah.
And there are challenges. Okay, as far as Satellite Beach goes, we had an active Storm Order Program since the And we're going to be getting credit in the BMAP for projects that we constructed after 2000. Now, I have to say something about that because two people in this room were very instrumental in getting that date changed. That date was actually 2006. So anything we constructed prior to 2006, we would not have been given credit for had it not been for two people in this room. And they were very, um, very outspoken about the fact that we spent a lot of money putting this together, and we were very out in the forefront of the, the Storm Order Program, and we shouldn't give credit, and they heard us.
Who are they?
Virginia and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Since, since 2000, we've built nine projects totaling $6.6 million, of which we paid $2.3 million thanks to Grant. And we're only 15% there. $6.6 million and we're 15% there. So, and the other, the point about that is that, that's the little game, that's the easy stuff. Now we're getting into the more difficult stuff. How do you deal with it? The, the, the problem that we're coming up with, we'll use a little bit more of that. Virginia's going to touch on some of that. But that's a shocking number. We spent that much money and we're just 15% there. The BMAP has, we started going to meetings in June of 2009, I believe, a long time, a long time. And, and everybody in the Indian River Lagoon Basin, you know, was a player. And they were strong players. Nobody went there just to kind of go to a meeting. Everybody was very outspoken. And when you're talking to the one that they're talking, everybody's going to take a little bit of, you know, a hard look at what's going on. The model used is the gluten load screening model. And it was, it was used for the basis for the TMV allocation. Now, the, the Plizzam was, um, uh, put together in the 1990s. And it was older data and older computer technology. They used C-RAS as a measure of success. Now, there were technical concerns regarding the Plizzam. There were some questions that were raised by, again, some of the people in this room, other people from, you know, folks from the base. All the stakeholders had, had some heavy concerns as to the information that they were seeing that was used to put the model together. Some things just didn't jive. So going forward, it was, the training team was put together. Now, Virginia and Brevard County Resource Management Office, they were very, again, instrumental in, in looking at the concerns that were, you know, that were out there and trying to figure out how best to approach it without really poo-pooing the, the model that was used. Because a lot of the information in the, in the Plizzam model was good information. And there were, you know, very astute individuals that couldn't get the model together, but there were still questions that they couldn't answer and information that was out there that wasn't being brought in. So there was a consortium put together of all the stakeholders, owners in the Indian River Lagoon. And everybody threw it to the pot. And so, uh, the training team was put together by, um, the, the folks at, um, NRMO. And the, the team consisted of computer processing folks, uh, folks that, uh, physical programmers, scientists, environmental systems, you name it, they, they brought it in to take a look, a hard look at the information that was in the Plizzam model to see how accurate the information was. And the piece numbers that they were throwing at us, because of the money involved, were accurate. Well, the study results, they, to get the results, they, they used expanded data and updated data sets, today's information. They ran on new computer technology. And what they came up with was that the annual loading estimates were reasonable, but they were oversimplified. So they weren't taking everything into consideration, and they were coming up with, in the original model, and they were coming up with numbers that didn't seem to, to jive with what we saw going in, uh, from surface run. Something else was happening. And that's what it was. Well, that's what they think it is. Groundwater nutrient transport, that's a big player. So in order to explain this... So, in order to explain this in a, in a more scientific way, Virginia is going to, uh, take over from here and then I'll, I'll take the show.
Now. Things are technical, how I change your recovery.
Escape, minimize that. The X, right, man. Ready that follow me to that.
Well, I want to echo what Alan said about the, um, the importance of, of voices and especially these two voices, Alan and John. The, the, the LSAM model was initially developed by the water management district staff when the Indian River Lagoon was designated as a national estuary. And the national estuary program wanted a goal, a clear and lofty water quality goal for its brand-new estuary, most advanced estuary in the country. And so, the scientists pulled together what available data there was. And from that, they took their best stat of coming up with a goal for water quality. And so, anytime there is some error or some uncertainty, they thought, well, let's be conservative, let's add a margin of safety. Let's make sure that the water quality goal that we pick is good enough for our region. And so, in each piece of the methodology, you got another layer of this conservative, safe approach. And when, um, the county hired, well, I can't have a second. And, and so, they developed pollution load reduction goals. So then, when the state came around here, working their way, basin to basin around the state, and they got here to develop total maximum daily loads for the region, if what available data is there, what studies are out there? And they saw this, this beautiful estuary plan with a gluten load production goal. Well, what's the difference between pollution load production goal and a total maximum daily load? Here it is, here's already a numerical expression of what we need to do. Let's just put our logo on it and adopt it, call it a day. And that's what they did. And so, what was developed by scientists as a clear and lofty goal all of a sudden became a regulatory mandate for local communities with an enormous price tag. And we estimated the, the, um, cost using current technology if you apply the, uh, historical costs of projects that we put in today. You took those rates and assumed that you could keep finding low hanging fruit to do all of they had to do, which is a bad assumption, but it was the only one we had at the moment. Um, it cost one point three billion dollars to be this clear and lofty goal. So, um, as Alan said, I've got those kinds of dollars, you've got to ask some really tough questions. And so, I looked at, you know, each of these assumptions that were being made, each of those safety factors being added, if you just multiply the safety factor in each piece of the equation, you came up with an answer that it might be right, or it might be six times higher than it needed to be for the public hearing. And so, um, when DPA started his talks in two thousand nine, the goal was to reduce pollution in the lagoon by a third in the first five years of the fifteen-year window. And, you know, that would be great, but A, we can't afford it. And B, if your goal is six times what it needs to be, and you're asking us to do a third in the first five years, we might overshoot the mark by double in the first five years. And we, we can't afford to do that. We've got to get the science right before we invest that into our community research. And so, we were having that discussion. And then, um, DPA presented some seagrass data in meetings. And so, this graphic is, um, something that I modified, but, but John Burress really was the, the brainchild of timing. So, the, the blue column is the total nitrogen load reductions. And the, uh, the rows are different segments of the Indian River Lagoon. So, the ones that are titled BR are those of the Banana River segments. And you can see based on the blue column, these are sorted from highest to lowest percent nutrient production required in the lagoon. The green boxes with the X's, those are areas where the seagrass was growing in the deep waters. It was already meeting the targets that these scientists had set for gluten load production goals back in nineteen ninety. So, these areas were, the water quality was clean enough for the seagrass to be healthy. And those were the very areas where the model predicted we would need the highest load reductions, the fifty to thirty percent reductions. Meanwhile, the areas where the model said we needed twenty to twenty-eight percent reductions, this seagrass was not doing enough. So, not only was the model telling us to do too much, it was telling us to put our greatest resources in the areas that were performing the best and put the least resources in the areas that were doing more. So there was definitely a problem with some level of detail in those model results. We didn't understand what it was, but this simple graphic that John came up with, um, just stopped things in Tallahassee. And they didn't scratch their heads. And they came out and they said, you know what? Maybe you should only try to get fifteen percent reductions in the first five years. And we said, okay, one-sixth of your target is about fifteen percent. And so, you know, we, we can agree to try to do that fifteen percent in the first five years. And during that five years, we will also try to figure out what is the right target. Where, where specifically should we be targeting the majority of our resources? All right, we'll try to move faster from here on out, but the introduction's always tough. So, um, the dream team, a team of, of six scientists pulled together from multiple firms, um, including, uh, folks who have worked with DEPA, who have worked with DEPA, who have succeeded in changing TMDLs adopted by DEPA in the past. Um, they came to, we pulled them together. Uh, we also have a, uh, partner who was hired by State to, um, update their stormwater rule, their statewide stormwater rule. So, we, we asked, who were the people who could actually change the law into DEPA and EPA? That's who we want, we pulled them together. So, these graphics are for the Banana River. Um, the first, uh, the upper left is the concentration of coal nitrogen in the water column. And you can see a downward trend. The left-hand side is nineteen ninety-six and the right-hand side is two thousand and nine. So, over that fifteen-year period, there's definitely a downward trend, so that's, that's improving. That is less nutrient pollution in the banana. Um, the upper right is total phosphorus. Less phosphorus pollution in the Banana River Lagoon. And the bottom graphic is chlorophyll. Chlorophyll is a measure of how much phytoplankton, how much algae is in the water column. And that is also a downward trend, ideal water quality improvement. So, all right, well, if the water quality gets better, what's the seagrass doing? Those green waters are acres of seagrass, and that's in the Banana River, um, in the, the years there, the first, the first year, this is from old, it's from aerial photo interpretation, nineteen forty-three, so we don't know how accurate it is, but, um, it gives us a nice historical perspective. And then, more recently, it's nineteen eighty-six to two thousand nine. So, acres of seagrass, up until the big super bloom, two thousand eight, two thousand eleven, were, were clearly doing beautifully. They were expanding in this cleaner and cleaner water quality, which probably resulted from the NPDES program shutting down both sewage treatment plants that used to, like, sewage, raw or barely treated sewage right into the Indian River Lagoon. So, the system has been cleaning itself up over time since, um, since those outflows have been blocked and curtailed. The bottom graphic is, um, the water management district scientists also swim surveys starting at the shoreline. And they swim out on specific transects, they use same transects every time they go. So, how far do you swim before it gets too deep for seagrass to, to grow? Before you get set in seven minutes instead of sea grass. And so, you see the length of those transects getting longer and longer over that pipeline. All right, so these are the same trends, but this is for the northern Indian River Lagoon, from the very northern end of the Indian River Lagoon, all the way down to about the one ninety-two causeway, Melver causeway. And so, it's down. Just before we move, I, everybody sees the downward trend. So, water quality is getting better in the northern Indian River Lagoon, next slide please. Seagrass also getting better, transect length getting longer. Okay, now let's move to the central Indian River Lagoon. So this is from the Melver causeway, all the way down to the south, um, boundary of Indian River County. So through Indian River County. So, again, water quality clearer and, and by seagrass, and so. So, here we are with, with these trends. I mean, they are what they are, this is, these are, this is not estimated, this is not modeled, this is measured by agency scientists, water quality improvements, seagrass improvements in every basin of the lagoon, yet we are being told to spend one point three billion dollars to reduce nutrient pollution. So, um, we, we felt it was very important to try to get a better understanding of what was, um, what was necessary? What, what did we need to do for it to be helpful? So, um, as Alan said, we worked on a new and improved model with, um, better inputs, more accurate inputs, um, better spatial resolution. Um, there were, there were little things that the agencies didn't want to deal with, that they were really important to the local community, like jurisdictional boundaries were found. Right? Well, do you want to be paying for the next city overs pollution cleanup? Or, I mean, it's just, it, it's important to us that that stuff be right. So, these bars represent, um, the output from our new models, role models, and for different years. And I will tell you, even though I didn't bring a graphic, that these outputs are very similar to the total loading that was estimated by the whole gluten load production model, the old cloud model. But, um, our output is monthly, whereas theirs was annual. And ours, um, has the jurisdictional boundaries correct. It, where you have put in, um, stormwater VMPs, even in your subdivisions, if you were required during development to bank that in stormwater treatment, that's captured in the model. So, we know those communities that have been the most forward-thinking in controlling pollution from the get-go get credit for that, whereas the ones that have been slower, uh, to get on board have, will have the most lift going forward. So, the other thing is that, um, so these bars, you see there's four colors there. And I apologize that the size of the font is so tiny. Um, but the blue is what we attribute to nutrients delivered through groundwater. The red is runoff. The green is sewage treatment plants. And the purple is atmospheric deposition. So, the old model assumed atmospheric deposition was constant through time. Um, we were very concerned that that was, uh, not a good assumption. And you see that the purple bars were much bigger in the earlier years. The purple portion of the bars were bigger in the earlier years than they are in the later years. So, so we were right, that has changed over time. But in the big picture, the purple part of the bar is just rather small. So, what's really important here is how much of the bar is polluted. How much of the nutrients that are making the lagoon are delivered in groundwater instead of runoff? And so, our initial concern when we saw this was, well, are we as MS4 NPDES permit holders, are we responsible for nutrients being delivered in groundwater? We, we thought we were responsible for runoff. So, how are the agencies gonna grapple with this? So, just to summarize what we learned so far, from, from looking at the data and rebuilding a new model, right, is that our, up, up until the super bloom, our seagrass and water quality were showing improvements over that two thousand one, two thousand eight, twenty twenty. And so, I want you to memorize these words, reference period, we're gonna talk about reference period in the next week's slides. All right, and that there were statistically significant relationships in each sub-division, there were in the north lagoon, in the banana lagoon, in the central lagoon, there were statistically significant relationships found between the incoming load and chlorophyll response, that are, um, algae response, algae growth. And that statistically significant relationship is a stressor response relationship. You add nutrients, you get algae growth. So, in the world of DEPA, TMDLs, and EPA, and marine nutrient criteria, um, there are three basic approaches that have been used setting these numerical standards. One is a reference condition approach, one is a stressor response analysis, and third is mechanistic modeling. So, we've got a reference condition and we've got stressor response. So, we've got two out of the three tools available to us, um, and with some really strong data. I got criticized for not defining reference condition in the last presentation I did. So, like, this concept is to find an example in space or time where your, the ecology that you were trying to protect was doing well. And set that as that's, that's your goal, we want that. If it's doing well then or there, that's what we want, how do we get to get there? Next slide. All right, and stressor response, I don't expect people to get the math, but, right, this is just, it's a mathematical equation. Put this much pollution in the water, you will get this kind of response in the water quality. And of course, there are all sorts of, um, co-factors, so many turbidity, um, and they're, they're listed there. Um, some systems respond more to the concentration of the nutrient load, some respond more to the total pounds introduced. So, you know, you try putting all these different factors into the equations and see what you get. So, we've done that, the dream team has done that. And, um, these compare the results of, uh, it's too little, I'm gonna read here. Um, well, one axis is what did we expect chlorophyll to be based on our, our, um, regression equations from that previous slide? And the other is what was the measure chlorophyll really? And so, you can see that our model, very, we've, we've got a pretty strong relationship between what our equation thought the chlorophyll would be, based on the nutrient loading per hour, versus what chlorophyll measured in the water column by St. John's River Water Management District staff that were with us. So, what we want to do is actually provide, um, set a new update with TMDL using a combination of the reference period approach and the stressor response relationship. We want to identify the space and time where seagrass was doing well, what was the chlorophyll in the water column in those places at those times, set that as a chlorophyll target, and then use our stressor response. And then use our stressor response relationships to say, what was the nutrient loading that allowed that chlorophyll level? Right? We don't want more nutrients that would lead to a higher chlorophyll level. We want the same nutrients that kept chlorophyll in check that let light penetrate the water column for the seagrass to grow. Is that... yeah?
Give me an example of what nutrient loading is. Tell me exactly.
How many pounds of nitrogen and rock phosphorus are reaching the lagoon through stormwater or groundwater or atmospheric deposition or the limited amount that is still coming from industrial or sewage?
Okay.
The amount of pollution, the only pollution.
Okay.
So this is an updated version of the table, really, that John Hurst started, what, two and a half? However, long ago, years ago. So we've gone back and we've looked at precisely what were the seagrass targets in each segment of the lagoon? And where did, where and when did the seagrass meet those targets? So in this one, I've sorted it instead of from highest to lowest load reduction based on the old level, which we still believe anyway. This is sorted from north to south with the banana ones at the top. Now, there are actually five segments of the banana. I've only shown three there because the other two have never had seagrass meet the target. So VR seven... Oh, sorry. Are there just four? Sorry, I have a whole bunch of numbers. So VR seven is the one that's not listed there. And that is the growth of the banana down close to Dragon Point. So other than that, you'll see that, you know, you've had a lot of good years in VR one to two, which is the northern of the banana, north of 528, north of the B one, right? And VR six, which is Newtown Harbor, right? VR three to five, which is between 528 and wherever, seven?
Pineda.
Pineda, okay.
What area is that, between Pineda and?
And 528.
Which one?
VR three to five. So that area has not done very well except for 2006. And you see in 2006, every segment of the lagoon that has ever met the target met it that year. So, right, immediately you say, well, gosh, what was going on in 2006 that made that such a great year for seagrass? And how do we make that happen again? So this kind of graphic, well, it doesn't have the answers. It helps to point us to where the answers might be, you know, where we need to go look for the answers. So up until now, when you're comparing loads coming into the lagoon versus your chlorophyll response, your algae growth response, and then how that affects light in the water column that affects how much seagrass is grow or don't grow. We talked about the load coming in from the communities around that basin. Okay? But life is, of course, not that simple. So there is a lot of transport in and out of North Lagoon, in and out of the banana, and in and out of Central Lagoon through Sebastian Inlet. So I've got a graphic, the next picture I think is Hallover Canal. Right? Now, Hallover Canal is in the North Lagoon. And the next graphic, there's a flow meter under the bridge at Hallover that measures water going east and west through Hallover Canal. So every time, the little graph there, the user flows, every time the flow is less than, the red line is zero. That is water moving from Mosquito Lagoon into the North Lagoon. Right? And then the season changes, and the water goes the other way. So it swashes back and forth from the North Lagoon and Mosquito Lagoon. And if you add up the volume of water, this is daily flow. So if you added up all this daily flow here during this season, that volume of water equals the volume of water coming in from all the land area that leads to the North Lagoon. So if that concentration, if the concentration of pollution in that water is cleaner than what the surrounding land is doing, then the mosquito lagoon is cleaning up the northern interlagoon. If the mosquito lagoon water is dirtier, then it's polluting the northern lagoon. When you know that you, that the banana river is a negative estuary. And, right, evaporation exceeds the amount of rainfall coming in through your communities and going into the banana. And so in order for water to remain, you know, at constant elevation, water is coming in through past Dragon Point into the Banana River from the interlagoon, the Mexico, on an annual basis. You have an enormous transport from the interlagoon. So if that water coming into the banana is dirtier than the water that you're putting into the banana, that part of your ground. If that water is cleaner, then that part of your solution. But certainly you have to account for that in these models. And nobody's done that before. So, next slide. This is a graphic of box plot modeling. And, you know, John Hurst has already carried things along. What about how we move large now and whatever? There's a lot of detail here. But the concept is, we have got to figure that out. We've got to figure out that transport of load from one lagoon, sub-lagoon to another, and how our communities affect each other. Because we don't all just have control of our own little bathtub. It's one big missing thing. We've got to remember this together. All right, this is my last one. I'm sure you have to do that. So this is similar to one of the earlier slides, but I cut out all the rest of the lagoon. And this is just for the Banana Rivers. You can see your bars there. And I wanted to go back to see how much of those bars, how much of the total pollution, the left side is total nitrogen, the right side is total phosphorus, how much of that is blue? So that is groundwater. So Alan's going to talk to you about the grant projects. Now, historically, you've got these wonderful sandy soils. So how do you get rid of stormwater? Well, you're percolated through these wonderful sandy, very sandy soils. But if those soils are not pulling out nutrients, if that water is just going into groundwater and then straight out to the lagoon, then you haven't actually dealt with a nutrient problem. And so that is a state concern that could broaden out because of our research. And while it's frustrating that it's a new thing to grapple with, I think it's a really important part of understanding how we succeed in cleaning up the lagoon? How do we succeed in capturing those nutrients and not just moving one place to another?
Continue, one question. Was Grant Gilmore on your committee?
Yes.
Because his data is totally different than this.
Who was that?
Grant Gilmore?
Yeah.
Totally different.
I have numerous email exchanges.
The seagrass thing is very interesting to me because I see totally different than, I make a living, I'm a fishing guy. I've never seen the seagrass ever get better in this area, bar none. The best seagrasser is, is Mosquito Lagoon, where there's the least impact from humans. But it's void. There's miles and miles. And the greatest decline was a single year after the freeze in 2007, where there's, I think, a tremendous bio-load of, you know, organisms that died. But you get in the boat and you go Pineda causeway north, it's non-existent. You go from Dragon Point to Sebastian Inlet, you might find a little starting to come at the inlet, and it's sand for as far as the human eyes can see.
Yeah.
And there's no nodules. So where are they? Exactly. And I've never seen it get better. That's my only concern, is I've never seen it get better. I mean, the grass out here in the Banana River before they put Pineda was spectacular. And this is a wind-driven body of water. There's no tides. For the most part, I mean, you could say it's on a 30-day cycle or something. I think that's what they figured out at Melbourne causeway. They did a dye test. So I was with Grant when he was doing it. But, you know, I've never seen the seagrass. You know, where is that baseline to say, here it is, here it is now? But...
A very interesting conservation.
I mean, it's void forever in areas that, you know, showed a steady decline until 2007. And I'm sure taking the points, you know, pollution out of it can only help. But something happened in 2007 because for 40 years, there was never an algae bloom in Mosquito Lagoon. Zero. And then all of a sudden, in the last two years, two different types of algae blooms in that body of water that has almost as natural a place as you're going to find in comparison to anything else around here. And why did it start there this year?
And of course, the typical assumption is that anytime you have an algae bloom, that agency reflexes must be pollution. Or must be nutrients. And yet, we have these trends of water quality data collected by DEP, War Mansion District, Green Resources Council, that show improving water quality. And in fact, the years when that bloom occurred followed, they were low rainfall years, right? So stormwater pollution is rain falling out of the sky, picking up pollution, tearing it to the lagoon. Well, if you have less rainfall now in the sky, you have less... So something else.
It's got some salty.
Right. You've got cold, we've got heat, we've got salinity, we've got legacy loads, we've got wind. There are a lot of other factors that we have to consider. We can't just assume that the culprit is...
When you, you know, I read the information on legacy loads. I mean, how do we address that? I mean, you know, you want to talk about millions of dollars. You've got sludge and muck all over. How do you... I mean, that could be where some of the problems are coming from, is the stuff that's buried down there being stirred up by the wind or whatever. Even in the mosquito lagoon area. I mean, you have legacy stuff up there. Didn't we do a study? John, '97, I'm thinking back then. We did a core of the lagoon here. And we talked about all these canals, about how they needed to be.
108,000 feet, 18,000 feet yards in the city, 560,000 from Pineda to Dragon Point.
I remember we...
Yes. My suggestion, of course, you know, we have all these meetings. And we'll pull everybody together and say, what are your ideas? What are your ideas? And try to, you know, pick out those ideas. This is to, the War Mansion District has produced this map. So according to their aerial rotation data, which obviously, you know, doesn't match your experience, but where seagrass was in each of these particular years. So I think we need to look at where have we lost extensive areas of seagrass? Where specifically have we lost seagrass dead? And where is it lost? And where muck is adjacent to moving into what used to be seagrass? You know, that's an area where muck is a likely culprit for that loss. So do we need to address all the muck in the lagoon? That would be nice, we could work through it. But where we can identify that specific seagrass losses are attributable to this specific muck deposit, that's where we have to prioritize and, you know, figure out how we find the resources to address it.
Thank you, Alan. Okay, wrap up here real quick. Where we are, we have a Lurie Lane 319 project that is funded through DEP. Problem. The Lurie Lane 319 project is an exfiltration project. And now that DEP has taken a harder look, harder look, or a look at the groundwater transport, exfiltration is now being looked at very heavily. Exfiltration being water goes in with a pipe that has holes in it. The water leaches out into the ground, into the groundwater, transports into the lagoon. That method is really, I don't know if they're going to fund those projects anymore because of the transport problem.
Alan, what's the length of time it takes to get to the lagoon? Were you...
Well, I don't know the answer, but I can't say that if you're dealing with 60-plus years of fertilizers and things in the grass, that it's going to be a constant problem because, you know, it rains, you fertilize your grass for how many years, and it just leaches down.
Got you. It's a lot... There is a study done in the Keys, in Key Largo. It's very fast. A friend of mine was on it where they had satellite time and they put dyes in people's toilets and flushed them in the septic tanks. As short as a half hour. The dye showed up in the Florida Bay, which is one of the reasons they think the Florida Bay's dying.
What's the alternative to the exfiltration? I mean, if they're saying that we can't use exfiltration...
There are other methods. And I've been talking with DEP and got some information through through the girls now running the smaller program, Amanda Pack. And there's all different types of technologies and thoughts. One of them being a, what they call, de-matification wall, which is sand mixed with sodas that basically creates little bugs that connect. That's great. What about phosphorus? You're not getting the credit for treating phosphorus if you're just treating nitrogen. So you're not doing what you need to do to get your credit through the DMS. So basically, you go to the project and not get any credit. So we've got to, and right now, David and I are working, David King and I are working on some different ideas on how we can meet the requirements and try to treat the water to the standards that they want the water to be treated. And it's just becoming more and more difficult when you deal with the groundwater aspect. So where are we going from here? Well, we have to resolve that issue. We have to resolve the treatment method issue. What we're going to do, going to hold. And as I said in the beginning of the presentation, that the...
Hit the next draw, maybe you'll remember.
Here, Alan, you want one of these?
I have one. Anyway, some things that are coming down the pipe are the fertilizer ordinance. The county has just adopted the model, their fertilizer ordinance, which is not far from the state's model ordinance. And John and I, John Stone and I have talked about it. We're going to have Mr. Beagle take a look at it before we bring it to council for your perusal so that, you know, you can take a look at it and see if something that you might want to consider for the city.
What does that ordinance do, exactly? I mean, what...
It's actually, it's more educational than anything because we really don't have fertilizer laws. But it informs folks. Well, it regulates more than anything in the commercial life here. And helps inform Joe Homeowner of the different things that he can do to make his grass grow without using high phosphorus, high nitrogen fertilizer. high nitrogen fertilizer. And that you don't need all these chemicals to make your grass grow. You take a little sample up to the digest station on the cobble and they can tell you exactly what you need and there's alternative methods to make your grass grow.
Alan, didn't we adopt and fertilize the ordinance in two thousand and ten?
No.
It was presented though, correct?
I think we, you know, I think we had talked about it. We didn't, we weren't what...
Thought it was.
And then, uh, going further than that, the illicit discharge ordinance, which is a requirement through the MPDES. Um, and going back to the fertilizer ordinance, I do believe that the state is mandating that each city adopt the fertilizer ordinance, and I'm not sure the date.
Twenty fourteen.
Twenty fourteen. So it's something that we do need to look at. Uh, back to the illicit discharge ordinance, we, we have a basic ordinance on the books that says you can't dump things that illegally dumped. Last time the illicit discharge ordinance, it has to stay illicit discharge ordinance in the ordinance or illicit discharge. That is an MPDES requirement. So we need to look at that. John and I have been talking about that. We'll put that together and bring that forward to you sometime in the future. Uh, another ordinance that needs to be, that John can get this better than I can, is to adopt a national flood insurance program ordinance. Um, and John, you wanna hit that real quick?
Sure. The, um, the new programs are gonna be coming out here. And with that, there's also a requirement for a, to adopt a flood ordinance. Something a lot more than what we have right now on the books, which is very antiquated. And this is gonna be a requirement for our continued participation in the FID program. Um, there was also a lot of changes in the Florida Building Code, twenty ten Florida Building Code, that talked about the flood, flood lane management. And this new, the model ordinance out there has been created by FEMA. That's the one that's directed, and they've spent a lot of time to make sure it is consistent with the Florida Building Code. And, um, that one's in the adoption process right now with a lot of the municipality around it. They've already done it. And I'm currently reviewing it and at some point that'll become the board's role. That really needs to be adopted in some version within a year of the longest. And again, if we don't adopt some kind of ordinance, preferably the model ordinance or a version of that, um, we will not be able to participate in the initiative FID program. Where that really affects people is the ones that are in special flood hazard areas. Those are the ones that, um, benefit with the discounts on premiums from the flood insurance program.
Where do they give people the discount flood insurance?
If you're in a special flood hazard area, such as the BE, those are the ones that receive a discount. So even if you're not in the flood insurance, you know, the community's not in the flood insurance program, you can still get flood insurance. It's just you, you will not get the discounts if you're in a special flood hazard area. So the, the majority, obviously, ninety-five percent of Saturday Beaches is not in a flood hazard area. They're what they call an exfil. Uh, the ones that are directly oceanfront, uh, they may have a portion of their property that's in a flood, a special flood hazard area. They may actually have their structure in a special flood hazard area. That's what your, uh, your survey will usually indicate. The new maps, uh, coming out have taken a lot of Lansing Island out of a special flood hazard area. Um, so therefore that requirement, if you haven't had a look at it, it's from your... It's mandated if you got flood insurance.
Is that where those, where the pollution is on the, on the eastern side versus in this community versus the western side?
I'll open it up for public comment. Let Alan finish his, um, presentation, please.
I wanna go back just real quick to the first bullet and I, it came back to me. The, the treatment, treatment method issue, um, is very important because our, we were required to have a stormwater master, uh, quality master plan. We have to, did a stormwater master plan in two thousand and one. And then we did a stormwater quality master plan two years ago. If the treatment method is changed, that stormwater quality master plan is going to have to drastically change because the methods that are used in that master plan are methods that will put together through by FDP in the DMAT process, identifying ways to treat the water. And it doesn't seem that those, those methods are gonna be so good. So we're definitely going to have to look at that issue in the big picture. Okay. And then the, the last bullet there, that's a no-brainer. You know, we go back to the, to the, one of the first slides we had, six point six million dollars, we paid two point three million dollars. You know, that's, that's a lot of free money out there. And people can argue whether it's free money or not. We did a lot of work in the city since two thousand with grant money and we solved not only, not only water quality issues, but we solved a lot of the damage and drainage issues in the city. There's still some areas that need to be taken care of, so that's an important, important factor in moving forward. And then finally, uh, the lakes and load issue. We touched on it a little bit. The muck is a big issue. Resuspension, um, has, it has, uh, a very, um, bad effect on the lagoon. And it's out there, it's not going anywhere, and it's continuing to build, so, you know, a hundred and eighty thousand feet yards of Saturday Beach below, that's a lot of muck.
Alan, you know, we've, we've done a lot of different things over the years to reduce stuff that's going in. Talking about a fertilizer ordinance that's probably going to address more stuff going in. We have to look at the legacy loads that are out there because we can do all of this stuff, but that stuff is still there. We can spend all this money doing, we're talking about spending doing, but if we don't address how we're gonna get rid of that muck, this stuff is never gonna go away. We can do all of this stuff, we can spend all of this money, but that muck is still gonna be moving around. And it's not just in Saturday Beach, it's through the lagoon system. And, and I understand that the money aspect of it is phenomenal, but, you know, they're asking us to do all these things and spend all this money. We've already done some things that are definitely enhancing the water quality going in there. But with all of that stuff there, unless we address how we're gonna deal with that, you know, we're spinning our wheels for the next twenty-five years.
And that's one of, that's one of the ideas, if, if the methodology, methodology is changing as far as, um, the ability to treat water on the barrier, because we do, we can't exfiltrate. That may be the next area where we start looking at grant money. First, start drawing the grant money and trying to address the lakes and load issue, you know, one step at a time. And, I mean, you know, at some point, it has to be looked at and looked at a part, you know, just like the groundwater issue. I, I, I personally, lakes and load to me is also the fertilizer that's in the ground that was put in there forty years ago.
Yeah.
Because it's still there, you know, so.
One thing from council, we may, so this doesn't get swept under the table and out of sight, out of mind. Um, I think we should direct staff to make sure we get the ordinance, you know, get this going on, the fertilizer, the discharge, and the flood. So it's not something that is put aside. And I remember this from a long time ago, that, about the muck in the canals that we brought it up. So, you know, I think that's something else we need to make sure we at least look at and have some idea of what kind of plans are available to do something with. Not that that has to be immediate, but I just don't like things like that just not being taken care of. I think we're at a point we need to. And I also think that all this is great to do things, but obviously, this is gonna take a lot of money. I mean, this is a lot more money than we've ever taken a look at for a project like this. And I think we need to get to our legislative people and find out, you know, if this stuff's gonna be mandated for a small city, how can any small city really afford something if you're talking fifty million dollars to bring it up and you give us a short time to do it? That's a staggering cost to us. And I think we've always been proactive in this. And so my thing is, let's get real proactive in it and find out where we can, you know, get funds from and make them aware of, you know, what's happening.
I agree. I mean, right now, where the three nineteen is standing as far as doing anything, you know, on the land side, um, you know, we might be chasing our tail.
The three nineteen that we have now, is that time-sensitive? Is it gonna expire if we don't use it in a certain amount of time?
We, we haven't signed a contract and, and I chose not to move forward with the contract. I never wanted to finalize the contract and send it and so that y'all can take a look at it to, you know, either go forward with it or not go forward with it. I, I asked them to hold off because of the issue that we're talking about now, um, to look at other things to do. Because if we had signed it and they held our feet to the fire, then we'd have to build a project and not get any credit for it. You know, and I, I don't think that that's something we wanna spend our money on. If we want, if we're gonna spend our money, we need to spend our money knowing that we're gonna get some credit for doing the project that we're doing. And, and helpful to do, and that's, that's a lot of money, you know, doing the right thing.
Well, there is a time limit on how long, um, the, the grantor will hold money for, um, our recipient to sign a contract, so. And I forget now what year that was awarded.
They approved the grant in last year, October of last year. And we were looking at going to build it in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen.
Well, if we change the constraints of what we initially applied for because we're doing something different, does the grant still, I mean, if we come in and say, we're not doing this exfiltration project, we're gonna build this nitrogen dam, are they gonna approve, you've changed what you requested, huh?
And I think in the, in the situation that we're in right now, I think DEP is willing to work with us um, as far as either funding and, and the building of the project because they're the ones that, well, they were the ones, but the, the monkey wrench is thrown into the works and they realize it and they don't have, they don't have a good hard answer. And they're wanting to work with us to try to come up with something that will work. So I think that they'll work with us as far as the time constraint really is. But the caveat to that is that it may cost more money to build a project that's going to deal with the nitrogen and the phosphorus to the level that they want it to handle.
Well, you've identified something to address the ni, the nitrogen.
Right.
Is there something, is there something out?
Yeah, we're looking at something for the phosphorus as well, but, you know, these are new technologies and, and, or new ideas, they can add a box, you know.
But that's what we've always done.
Exactly, exactly. And so if, if we can throw, throw a demonstration project at it, maybe they'll foot the bill for that and even our cost share is saving, you know, maybe they'll, they'll pony up the rest of the money for a demonstration project just to see if it works going forward and they can pass that on to other communities.
Mark, sorry.
Um, what kind of timeframe are we looking at in terms of the modified treatment methodologies before, before we have some confidence that we can proceed? Either with the grant that's already been funded or going out with other grant projects? Do you... What kind of timeframe? We're kind of in...
Oh, oh, David, um, actually, he, he was hoping to have some of the next rules. Just, just some ideas that we can get on a conference call and talk to, talk to Cal Hessen.
Okay.
If they'd be willing to buy into doing what we're, you know, we've got a couple ideas that we've been throwing around. So, um, we'll get with Cal Hessen, do a conference call thing and hopefully they'll, they'll buy, say, A or A and then we'll look at those top dollars, you know.
And at that point, you would go back to the three nineteen people?
They offer three nineteen.
Okay. Oh, okay. Okay.
I had a conference call with those same people today about some of our grants, because we're obviously in the same boat. Um, and they very much want to look at innovative technologies for, um, nitrogen fixing. Um, and they said that, you know, they, they will pony up additional cost share for incorporating those sorts of, uh, solutions into exfiltration, filtration, drive, you know, to those projects. So I don't know that they will cover all of the additional costs, but they would certainly come up with their regular cost share on the additional costs. Another thing I learned today from Warband District is that they've been directed to, um, they've got a large reserve. And they've been directed to use that reserve to come out with a new, uh, grant program uh, to support innovative projects for water quality. So that'll be another source that will hopefully be announced, um, in a couple of months. And maybe we can use that to leverage additional dollars in addition to the three nineteen and the FID program. But yeah, we're gonna be looking at innovative ways to make our projects more innovative.
So then we really should be, uh, looking for some concrete answers very shortly in, in terms of guidance on going forward with these projects.
Also, Lauren, is your question the percent too, because they wanted X number of percent by a certain date?
Percent of what?
Of the load being out. We have fifteen percent now in...
Five years.
When will we know what those figures are so you work towards them? Is that part of your...
Yeah.
Okay.
We've already met our fifteen, our first, first fifteen, so we're good for the first five years.
Okay.
So basically, we have to be at, um, what is it? Fifteen, five percent? About fifty-five to sixty percent by the ten-year one.
How much is that gonna cost us? I mean, that's where I think we need to, you know, look at it as saying, what's that percent?
In dollars.
In dollars. What's the percent in dollars? Then where the projects are that we can make this happen because, you know, without that percent there, what they set.
They realize the problem because we, because we have a stormwater quality master plan that was based on science and technologies and methodologies that we're now finding aren't working. We're working so well. We have to come up with innovative, different ideas to be able to treat the water to the standards they want us to treat them. And we don't know what those methods and those VMPs are gonna cost. Because we've already got the low hanging fruit. We're at fifteen percent water and it's costing six point six million dollars. Well, going forward, it might take six, six point six million dollars to get halfway there, a quarter of the way there, I don't know.
So you're saying, technically, you could be saying that some of the exfiltration projects that we've already put in aren't gonna be effective and probably will need to be either redone or readdressed.
I don't think they're gonna take that credit if you can't do it. You think that is a possibility?
I think everything's gonna be...
Unresolvable.
Negotiation in five years.
So for the first iteration, we're, we're covered, but in five years, they may come back and say something else.
There are soil amendments that UCF's former academy and some other company have come up with. So you could scrape a portion of your dry pond and put in these soil amendments and they would act like a nitrogenation wall. There are filters that you can add for addressing phosphorus. So there are some solutions out there. We're just gonna have to try them and then we're gonna have to monitor them and demonstrate how successful we are with ours. We're gonna be on the record for the next few years, aren't we, thanks?
Mark? Okay. I, I'm gonna, a great presentation by both of you. Thank you. What I hear is we're gonna be doing this for a number of years. This process is gonna be moving forward. And what I'm not hearing, and this may not be something you can answer, is we're looking at grant writers and all that sort of thing as possibly getting back on our, our, our city staff and that sort of thing. What is the best resources, people, organizations that we could direct these grant writers to or Alan could interview with or whatever that get us going in a long-term path to do this process right? I mean, we're hearing that a lot of things we might have done before doesn't, won't work anymore again. So, you know, when we bought our beachfront property, it took years to do that. We kind of followed a plan. We kind of followed a plan. So give us some type of an idea on how Alan should move, how our grant writers should, how future councils should move on this. Because I need to see kind of where we're going because I just hear a lot of things that might work. Any ideas on who we should follow? Or John?
We still don't know the science. We've identified problems. Okay? But identifying problems was the worst part we had to deal with and we had to not figure out something ahead. Having said that, it's really amazing how far we've been. You folks couldn't come in here with a hand to give if you didn't say you listened. Sometimes you have to shout pretty loud, but you listen. We've got science to deal with and we're going to solve that in the next three months, six months, or also in a year. We may go in five years, but we're going to answer, they just want to take demonstration projects, all this kind of stuff, and then sort things out. We also have regulations to worry about. The TMDL is on the books and we keep just racing. Some people stop in the legislature or the citizens. So, but again, the regulators are working with us, uh, we're going to drag them along and push them and help them to deal with it. So if you get the signings right, and that's what it's all about, we can spend $100 million and it doesn't fix the lagoon. So it's getting that right. It's getting the regulators on board. And to give you an example, you're talking about legacy load. DEP has never given stormwater credit before dragging them up. What's it going to do with stormwater? Last year? Last year, we held the stream and made noises and they finally, in the El Galley Civic Center there, they had a first meeting ever where they talked about stormwater and legacy load. Two ways to deal with legacy load. It's in the muck. And the other one that's just turned into a touch so far, it's also in the alley. It's in the water. We had folks saying, hey, you know, if we went out and harvested a whole bunch of the algae, guess what? We sucked out a whole little bit of it when we got it. And there is a plant down in the solar satellite here that takes biomass and tries to nip it into biofuel. So...
Okay, well, let me ask you this. Is it to our advantage to offer to participate in demonstration projects or pilot studies or what? I'm trying to figure out some way to save money on this, but be on the forefront of it, but not...
I'd say the best thing to do is what we've been doing. We have been cheap buying out accounting and the regulator.
Okay.
And going through this. And so it kind of puts us in a corner of the world, looking at stuff and anticipating things. The fact that Alan's talking to the people on DEP about how to modify a grant, that's all that matters.
Okay.
And you got to see, DEP is not monolith. The office that we're talking about that's the grant is not the office that deals with TMDL. They have talked, and Virginia has talked to one person, they've talked to another person, all this stuff, but it's basically staying as connected as we can. And the regulators with the science. And it probably is going to mean we're going to need to pony up money. And we pony it up towards the 300-plus thousand to get the green team. And that isn't, they're not done. So that's going to be part of, and DEP's not going to get any credit for it.
Okay.
But that's, that's the thing. Once we know what to do, then we need to go chase some grants. And again, those people will need to be plugged in real close with the county and what's going on. And, uh, this legacy load and it's, it's part of it that's coming down the road, it's on the present.
I just want to make sure I understand a few things because Alan and I talked about this last year. We're not mandated to do this. The mandate is coming for our next, in February of 2013. And we're pretty sure that it's going to be a mandate.
We're mandated to meet the TMDLs. The BMAP is, is a mandate. The, it is a mandate. We, it's going to be here whether we agree to or not. So we're going to have to comply. You know, uh, they were actually looking for letters of support, you know, saying they have a city buying into the BMAP. But we've kind of been holding off to, to really get some, some feedback from DEP about the study that the dream came in and the numbers and, and the results of that study. And Virginia's been directly connected with them and having significantly come back. So, um, I think the general consensus is throughout, through the, throughout the lagoon stakeholders is, you know, we don't want to buy in because we know that there's something not right that we, we know.
And then we do have the stormwater, we have a stormwater master plan and a stormwater quality master plan.
Right.
So basically, we've been following the stormwater quality master plan and we have credit up through five years of the...
No, actually, we've been studying, we've been following the stormwater master plan because, um, we didn't have the quality master plan until 2010. We've been doing projects since 2000 and, and with the water quality in mind, knowing that this was coming down the pipe. The, the, the water quality master plan identifies a lot of projects. It quantified what we did as far as the credits for the BMAP. And then it identifies projects going forward and the credits that we could gain by doing those projects. Well, now that the, the game has changed, we don't know if those credits are still going to be available for the project we've identified. So we're going to have to maybe tweak that, you know, water quality. One thing that I just wanted to mention, the email that was at your, um, at your seat when you first came in, Virginia sent me an email this afternoon about, um, the nutrient, um, American nutrient criteria that was set forth by the EPA dealing with estuaries and we already have, let me let Virginia go with it. She's better at that.
So in addition to all this DEP, TMDL, BMAP stuff that's going on, EPA has also developed American nutrient criteria for every water body in the state. And they have two rules that, um, based, two is the coastal rule, which includes all estuaries and baseline is mostly streams of flowing water in lakes. So those two rules have been proposed November 30th and they have 45 and 60-day deadlines for comments. That is just way too short, the timeframe. So the inland water rule comments are due February 1st. The coastal water rules are due February 19th. And the, the appendices to their coastal rule that include all the backup of the modeling that they did as the basis for their standards for the end of the lagoon is not there. They have not released it yet. Yet we're supposed to be developing our comments. Um, so this is a, um, a bunch of communities and DEP are sending letters to EPA asking for an extension of that comment period because we don't have the documents to break the comment on.
Is, is this something that we, we can't act on this tonight because this is a workshop? We'd have to have this as an agenda item for the next meeting before we can vote on it?
Correct.
To authorize sending this?
Doesn't necessarily have to come from, how fully you could direct staff to give the letter.
What were the dates?
Um, February 1st. Yeah. Great folks for the inland rule, which includes ditches and February 19th for coastal.
We have a meeting next week. I mean, we could, I, I would rather see the letter come from the city on, on city letter head, um, with Frank's signature on it as the mayor. So I would defer the council to say, one to the 23rd agenda and, um, let's, let's get it done.
Counsel, okay with that? Mark, any further questions from you?
Yes, sir. That, that letter would be to, it's the...
It must extend to...
Yeah.
And it's, it's actually a form letter on the back of this email, Jeff, that, that basically goes to the stakeholders that are on the front of the email.
Counsel, Dean, you have any other comment? I mean, so what up?
Let me, I would like to ask a question. Were you asking her or for...
She had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just wanted to try to pick a, a stab at, um, Barbara's question about grants.
Yeah.
I think it's sort of a two-part question. So there are people, you know them very well, who are great at writing grants and reading requirements for a specific grant, seeing what they're looking for and how many of those boxes you can check and how to maximize your points, your rankings, whatever. And so, you know, you know your folks who are good at doing that. The problem is they need to know what to apply.
Exactly.
And so that question of what is the technology that's going to work that we want to ask for funding to do, that's going to have to come from, I think, your stormwater consultant side.
Okay.
So it'll be a tax on that.
Lauren?
Yeah.
That goes, that goes back to your relationship with David King and all that.
David King, Gordon England.
Okay. All right. Got an answer. Thanks.
Should this letter be sent to all of these peoples or just to this one person at the EPA?
Um, I, I was at a call that it was best to include all of those people. And when I sent our letter earlier today, um, I forgot to attach it to the email and Drew Bartlett, who's, you know, way up in DEP, he immediately replied, thank you, but where's the attachment? So they're, they're paying attention and I was just talking to all.
Okay. And, and this is going to be an emailed letter as an attachment from the city email?
Speaking of emails.
I'm going to open up for public comment. Any public comment?
But let me follow up on this question.
Okay.
We don't send each of them their own letter. We send all of these folks a copy of this letter that's going to Elizabeth Sutherland. Is that correct? Okay.
This letter you all received, is that being used? The citizens received, or what you just got?
It'll be in the, it'll be in the council packet.
Okay.
It's going to be an agenda for the 23rd. Look if I put it on the website.
All right. And you mentioned a name, Mr. Bartlett, after that?
No, I didn't.
Yes, thank you very much.
Jeff?
I'm going to just want to tell you a couple things. Something I can say in my comments before. The stormwater quality master plan listed about $80 million to get us that 55% of what is supposed to be done with the technology that we've done because he had to carry a pedal with it on this subtraction for the new ones. Here's the problem. I did my best and he ranked him, you know, from the most dollar efficient to least dollar efficient. And what I did, I said, I'm going to assume that his least dollar efficient. So he's, he's picking the low, low hanging fruit first and then short by the government and then higher and higher. I said, I'm going to assume that things don't get any worse from this point and I'll go forward until I solve the problem. It's north of $70 million. Maybe that assumption that it doesn't increase. And also, that's what we call the master plan included projects such as bombing the satellite arms and the little store that's used to be oat place next to it and turning it into a retention pot. Somehow, however, I don't think that's one of them. There were a bunch of them that's gone and been there. The point is, these are numbers and are outside. And I think at some point, the regulators are going to realize it. What happens, you know, that's when the irresistible force gets, gets the usual object, that's going to go long. That's kind of a song to go on here. But this is a problem that we're going to deal with after you guys threw this out.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comment? Now, for back to counsel, counsel, anything else? Uh, before I close, just to remind everyone, the meet...
Thank Virginia.
Yeah, let me get that. January, our, our meeting tomorrow night is 6:30. Got it, everyone? 6:30. Uh, and also there's a little invitation, if I don't say this, I'm going to be in trouble. An invitation everyone got for a dance recital at, on Sunday.
Are you dancing?
Rhyme is not going to be here. Um, Virginia, thank you very, very much for coming and working with us and we do appreciate Alan and staff. Thank you, John, as always, thank you very much. Uh, meeting's adjourned.
Wait, 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 wait. The meeting tomorrow, we have two meetings tomorrow.
We have a 6:30 to go over the letter for...
Yeah, and a 7.
And a 7.
The town plan. Okay. The reality is, uh, you all will probably see the letter when you sit down here tomorrow. I'm really slammed for time and I'm still trying to study the issue with all the stuff that I've been trying to collect. Um, so if I get it done and time to email it to you, fine, you can check your email. Otherwise, you'll see it here.
Right. What have to I do? Any other further business? Meeting adjourned. All right. All right. I got to talk to Virginia.